November 7, 2023, meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Misty?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quinnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise and repeat with me the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is Councilmember Board Reports and Acceptance of Meeting Minutes. So we have several minutes from our last city council meeting, Plan Commission Parks Board, two sets of minutes. The Agenda erroneously listed the Senior Citizen Center Bingo Advisory Board. That's not a city committee, so we won't be accepting minutes for them. But for the others, are there any questions or comments on those minutes?
I'd like to comment.
Please, Mr. Waters.
I thought the Parks Board meeting, the Parks Board minutes were very informative and very thorough, so it was kind of refreshing to read something like that that actually went into more depth than what the meeting was about instead of just listing the item and moving on. So I thought it was very informative, and I'm not sure who did those minutes, but thank you.
That's Mr. Nestman's work. He's very dutiful in that, in taking those notes and doing that for us, yep.
I agree, and it's especially appreciated because those meetings are not recorded, like some of the other ones that we have where you can go back and watch a recording. So it's helpful to have a little more detail there. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll accept those minutes into our city records then. Our next item on the agenda, number five, is correspondence. Ms. Quinnow, I'll start with you.
I had kind of a quiet email correspondence situation. I received an email regarding one of the agenda items for today, an email regarding the Ad Hoc Committee and a capital fundraising brainstorming activity from the Library Board. But aside from that, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
I also had the Library Capital Drive and the Ad Hoc on the trees. In addition, some people reached out to me on signs and lighting, so I pointed them towards our ordinances. I had correspondence on pickleball, the lake levels, and the Mill Pond Committee as well.
Mrs. Bishop?
Okay, yes, I had correspondence about the lake levels, correspondence from a property owner in the industrial park, correspondence about the Mill Pond, the Bartles Beach seawall, and correspondence about a pickleball, a community fundraiser.
Thank you. Mr. Fields?
Kind of the same, and then just the email on Rock Lake levels and the joint Rock Lake report.
Okay, and I also had emails on Rock Lake water levels, Mill Pond and Channel dredging, the Bartles Beach seawall, and had some correspondence regarding a private water main break at the Rock Lake. Okay, so that's our correspondence. On to Agenda Item Number Six, which is Questions and Public Comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's Open Meetings Law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided at the podium. If there's anyone attending online that wishes to comment, please type your name and address in the chat feature. So is there anyone who would like to make public comment this evening? It looks like mostly staff that are online, and I don't see anyone here in the room. So I think you will close the public comment. Our next is Item Seven, the City Managers' Report, and we have a number of attachments. So Drake, you want to?
Sure. Lots of good things in this month's report. I'm going to skip over the first one, and then after I'm through, running through my report, I'm going to invite Randy up to give some more detail on that item. In good news, the city of Lake Mills was awarded the COPS grant by the U.S. Attorney General's Office. So this provides $250,000 to be expended over the next five years for the addition of two police officers, so $125,000 per position. That $125,000 is spent over a three-year period once you start. So this is going to cover approximately $42,000 of a new position in 2024. You'll see that reflected in the budget. So I have not heard, I've heard mainly or exclusively support for that position in the budget. So I'm going to ask Chief Schroeder after tonight to begin putting together the recruitment process for that so that we can get someone as early in the year as possible and possibly get someone to sponsor through the academy, which starts in early January. So we'll see if we can meet that. And then in future, 2025 or 2026, we'll have to discuss how we want to proceed with that second position. But this is a very competitive grant program, so we're excited by this funding that'll help us expand our public safety personnel. Tree removal for health-related reasons and structure deficiencies is beginning this month. Attached to my report on the second page, you'll see a new letter that Grounds and Facilities is putting out that goes to adjacent property owners. That lists what the tree species is, whether it's, if it's slotted for removal, and then the reason behind why it's being removed. So all the trees that are being removed this month are exclusively because they're structurally deficient or because their health has been seriously compromised. But those letters went out a few weeks ago, so each adjacent property owner should be aware that the city-owned trees that are scheduled for removal are being removed by city staff. Farmers and Merchants Bank, one of our new developments, is nearing completion of the project. They are looking to be all wrapped up this year. It's an impressive facility and a nice investment in our community, so we're happy to see that project coming to fruition. November 11 is Veterans Day. We have a number of city employees that served in the military or armed forces. So just a special thanks to Steve Schroeder of the Police Department, Zach Roberts of the Police Department, Bill Keisling of the Wastewater Utility, Dave Grooman with Cable TV, Jason Shear, who's with the Public Works Department and the Fire Department, and then Andy Brinkman, Josh Trum, Brendan Mertz, Steve Gardner, Scott Irwin, Nathan Latrell, Edward Rivera, and Gilbert Schaefer, who are all with the Fire Department, and then of course, our own Mrs. Bishop. So thank you to all of them, and we wish you a Happy Veterans Day.
And Mr. Fields? You were a veteran? No? Oh, I'm sorry.
His son.
His son, yep.
My dad and my son.
Okay.
Hard skipped a beat there for a second.
Sorry. Sorry to interrupt like that.
And then I did attend a meeting with the Wisconsin DNR, sat in on one with the Rock Lake Improvement Association. And for the council's information in that meeting, the DNR staff did indicate that they would not be in favor of the temporary waiver of their order that was recommended by RLIA during that discussion. So just wanted to keep the council informed of that. And then a list of some of the meetings I attended. There's also a, the Ryan Brothers Ambulance Monthly Report is attached, as well as a report from the Fire Department and some financial documents as well. If there's no questions there, I would...
I do have a question before we move on to Randy. Regarding the tree removal, I know it was mentioned at the Parks Board that it appears that oak wilt has been found in the city of Lake Mills. Is there any more information that you or Mr. Schreiner can share about that or things that property owners should be aware of?
I'll ask Eric to speak in more detail on it, but there is lab-confirmed oak wilt at some of the trees in Sandy Beach Park, so those will have to be imminently removed if they have not yet been, not already been removed. Oak wilt is a, it spreads quickly. So Eric, if you'd like to give any more detail?
Yep, absolutely. So those were lab-confirmed results at Sandy Beach. There were two oaks near the interior volleyball court within Sandy Beach that did have confirmed oak wilt. What I was thinking about doing was potentially doing a public notice just for residents of the city to potentially identify any issues within oaks to see if it has oak wilt or not. At that point, they can obviously request for city staff inspection. And then I would also like to include some instructions on how to send in resident samples to the UW State Lab of Agriculture to do samples as well. So it is something that I'd like to do more information to the public just so they're aware of how to identify it and how to test for it.
Thank you. That sounds like a good approach to get some communication out about it. And I'm grateful that our city has an ordinance regarding, you know, management of oak trees on private property as well so that people are hopefully not pruning their trees during the growing season to avoid spreading the disease. So thank you for that, Mr. Schreiner. Mr. Waters?
I did have a question on the Fire Department report. There was an acronym that was CLMFD, and I didn't understand what that acronym was, but I guess it's the City of Lake Mills Fire Department, just to make that clear to everybody.
Thank you. Any other questions in the other reports? Mr. Fields?
Yeah, thank you for the reports. On the Fire Department report, are we going to get to reporting times? Like was in motion 22/8/24, or 8? It was requested to have all the runtimes in there in their reports, too. Are we going to get back to doing that?
Yep, so I asked Chief Russ, and currently the Fire Department system that records these isn't set up to run the EMS through it as well. They're actively fixing that so that it'll just populate through their, through their reports, and then we'll be able to, we'll have more detail on those calls as far as response times, time of day, and things of that nature. So yes, they're actively working towards having more detailed data for the council.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the other reports? Okay, I think you wanted to turn one of the items over to Randy?
Thank you, Drake, and thank you, council. I want to bring a Lake Mills staff member to your attention and explain why this person deserves the city's recognition. I'm sure everyone appreciates just how important wastewater treatment is to every civilization and every community in our country and in the world. No community can survive or thrive without access to clean drinking water and proper wastewater sanitation. Wastewater treatment has scientifically and logistically advanced to very sophisticated levels. And here in Wisconsin, the DNR is dedicated to protecting our natural resources and works hard to educate, monitor, and regulate the hundreds of treatment plants in our state. Bill, will you join me up here, please? So in 2019, the Wisconsin DNR initiated the Wastewater Facility Operator of the Year Awards of over 200, 2,000 wastewater operators working in Wisconsin. Every year, the DNR recognizes two for exceptional service, ability, and dedication. One of the 2022 recipients of this prestigious award was Bill Keisling. This brings me to 2023. Just about everyone in this industry that I've been a part of for many years belongs to the Wisconsin Wastewater Operators Association. This is a professional organization dedicated to protecting Wisconsin's water quality through effective and efficient operation of wastewater treatment facilities by trained professionals. Each year, the WWOA holds a three-day conference that culminates with the recognition, recognizing six different operators from each of the six different regions of the state. Here in the South Central Region, the conference was held two weeks ago. For 2023, during the South Central Regional Conference, Bill Keisling was awarded Operator of the Year. This is a coveted accolade within our industry and an achievement the Department of Public Works is very proud of. Bill's family has served the Lake Mills community for the past three generations at least. He himself has worked here for 33 years, and now he has vowed that he will not retire until I do. Mr. Troy Larson, he's an engineer with Strand and Associates, wrote on Bill's behalf, saying, "Bill has been able to find ways to facilitate conversation, improve operations, and positively impact the residents and industries in Lake Mills while never losing sight of his core responsibilities of creating high-quality, affluent, reintroduced to our ecosystem." So council, administration, and our community members, I would like you to join me in recognizing our wastewater foreman, Mr. William Keisling III, a very talented, valued, and dedicated member of the town of Lake Mills.
I guess I really didn't prepare anything. I just want to say it's, it's kind of humbling to be recognized, and I, I appreciate it, and being recognized by my peers was quite an honor, and they, they got me good because I had no idea, and I'm a suspicious person, so. But, but I do think that there's a lot of really talented people working very hard, just going about their business day in and day out, and thinking, nobody notices, and it's, it's nice to be noticed. So thank you.
Bill, I'm going to come, I'm going to come and shake your hand, Bill. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So that's two years in a row, so I don't know which award you'll be back for. Next year, we'll wait to find out. Congratulations, Bill, and thank you for your dedicated service to the city. Okay, any other questions or comments on the City Manager's Report? Okay, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, Council Business. And our first item is Letter A, which is the Review, Selection, and Appointment of Members to the Advisory Committee on Urban Forest Management. So Drake, you sent us councilmembers the applications. Is there anything else you want to?
Nope, it's a five-member committee, and we have five applications that would have been emailed to you separately.
Okay, I went back to look at the language that we approved for our, let me just call it up here, in the resolution that created this committee, and it said, "The city council will select five members to serve on the committee." So we didn't give ourselves any kind of a process or how we would choose. Since we have five, and that's the number that we need, I would propose that we simply have a motion to appoint the five people who applied, and then we can discuss that and vote on that. Is everybody in favor of that approach? Okay, so is there a motion, please?
Sure, so I move to approve the following people. I'm sorry, I should say to appoint the following people as members to the Advisory Committee on Urban Forest Management. Jeanette Hightman, Ricky Santavec, Brandy Braskowski-Dorel, Elaine Thousand, and Matt Blessing.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Bishop and second by Mr. Fields. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Bishop?
Well, I'll just say I appreciate these five people stepping up to do this. I recognize a few of the names as people who have spoken to the council before and have addressed issues with the council before, so I know that they are aware of what's going on in our city, and they've stated such a desire to be a part of this committee and have a say in something that the city decides on and makes policy on moving forward. So I appreciate them submitting the applications, wanting to be available for these meetings, and helping us formulate a policy.
Thank you. I'll just add that I was really pleased to see the, we had people from all different walks of life, from all different neighborhoods around the city, so that I think will be a real asset on this committee. And we have people who have been through street reconstruction on their streets in the last few years, and one individual who, it'll be coming up in a couple of years. So I think they'll, they'll definitely have an interest and a lot to contribute to this committee. Any further comments or discussion? Okay, then can we have a roll call vote on the appointment of the five listed members to the Advisory Committee on Urban Forest Management?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. So then Drake, it'll be, next steps will be up to staff to just reach out to the committee members and get the first meeting going.
That's correct, yep.
Thank you. Okay, next Agenda Item, Letter B, is a discussion and decision regarding a Class C wine license for Tyranina Brewing Company doing business as the Pharmacy Public House located at 203 North Main Street and appointing Robert Larson as agent. So is there a motion to approve this license?
I move to approve the Class C wine license application for the Pharmacy Public House, appointing Robert Larson as agent.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Mr. Waters. And I see Mr. Larson and his manager are here. If we have any questions, are there any? Misty, do you want to just give us an overview of what we're being asked for tonight?
Sure, Mr. Larson made an application to add a Class C wine license to his establishment, Tyranina Brewing Company, which is doing business as the pharmacy downtown on Main Street. That is underneath permit through the Department of Revenue for the brewery end of it. They are eligible for a Class C wine license at this point. A Class C wine license does, is for a restaurant in which the sale of alcohol beverages account for less than 50% of gross receipts. The pharmacy being a new business, new restaurant here in town, we aren't able to establish that. So I did confirm with Jason Lee, who is the agent through DOR, and he agreed that there would be no problem with them obtaining this Class C, and then we'll just monitor it going forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote on the motion to approve a Class C wine license for Tyranina Brewing Company doing business as the Pharmacy Public House and appointing Robert Larson as the agent?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is Letter C, which is a discussion decision on a private well permit for Farmers and Merchants State Bank at 550 West Tyranina Park Road. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the application for a private well permit for Farmers and Merchants State Bank at the site address, 550 West Tyranina Park Road.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Ms. Quinnow. Any staff discussion?
Sure, so Farmers and Merchants is one of our more recent annexations that parcel into the city, and so the city's water utility is not yet out to their property for them to connect to. So this permit will allow them to continue operating their private well until such a time that the city's utility reaches them, at which point they'll be required to connect and pay for their portion of, of that connection to them, of the extension to them. So when we, when we get out there, they will be required to connect, but for now, they are permitted, this would permit them to continue operating a private well.
Any questions on this application? So this would have been the well that served the Mo's Bar previously. It's the same well?
There were three wells on the property. Two have been abandoned, so this is one of the wells that would have served that property.
Okay, so there's one remaining. Okay, that's good. We don't want to have too many unused wells out there. And is there any kind of a timeline or plan that the city has for when we expect water to be extended out there?
It'll largely be driven either by additional annexations or by additional development. So there is property out there that if it were to be developed, would probably necessitate the extension. I don't have a timeline on that, but it'll be driven by other extensions that become necessary. Or if the city undertook a project to extend out in that way for some purpose, that, that could spur it as well. But additional annexations, additional well failures or things of that nature would speed that up, but no specific timeline on when that might occur.
Okay, thank you.
And then they, they have signed an agreement with the city that they will connect within 20 years regardless. So over the next 20 years, if we still didn't get there, they would have to pay for the extension of that, of that utility.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this application? Okay, can we have a roll call vote then on approving a private well permit for Farmers and Merchants State Bank at 550 West Tyranina Park Road?
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. On to Letter D, which is Resolution 23-73, a donation for Electric Pedestal in Commons Park. Misty, would you read that title for us?
Resolution 23-73, accepting a donation from Mr. Electric and Schweigert Concrete for the purchase and installation of an electric pedestal in Commons Park.
Okay, is there a motion, please?
I moved to approve Resolution 23-73, accepting a donation from Mr. Electric and Schweigert Concrete for the purchase and installation of electric pedestals in Commons Park.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fields, seconded by Mr. Waters. Mr. Daley?
I will ask, I'll ask Director Schreiner to speak on this as he's been working with the donors to bring this to fruition.
So I did include a memo as well within the agenda, and as per the donations policy, it does need city council action for the approval of that donation. The holiday tree that's referenced within that memo and the resolution itself was basically an existing non-compliance with electrical and fire code, and the donation for the installation of this electrical pedestal would basically bring us up into compliance to return the holiday decorations to be restored to that tree.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schreiner or about this project? I just had one question. I'm assuming the, once donated and installed, then the pedestal becomes the property of the city, so we would be responsible for any future maintenance or repairs or anything like that?
That's correct.
Yes, that is correct as for the donations policy.
Thank you. Did you have a question, Mr. Fields? Okay. All right, if there's no further questions, can we have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-73, accepting a donation from Mr. Electric and Schweigert Concrete for an electric pedestal in Commons Park?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Agenda Item, Letter E, is Resolution 23-74 regarding a Humane Society contract. Misty, would you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-74, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Humane Society of Jefferson County.
Can I say a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution 23-74, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and the Humane Society of Jefferson County.
Second. Motion by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Any staff comment?
This is an annual approval. The Humane Society, through this contract, takes police drop-offs of strays that they may, that they may pick up, public drop-offs of strays, as well as the, the shelter themselves if they do a pickup. They also, will, will safekeep animals and take owner surrenders of animals, as well as some other services. So they are our, they are our contractor essentially for the dealing of... So they are our contractor essentially for the dealing of animals that are at large, or stray animals on our behalf.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I, thank you. I looked at the rate, $18,000 roughly, and asked the question, what do we get as a city for that? What are the services that are rendered? And it looks like in the past year, we've had nine police drop-offs of strays. We've had 14 public drop-offs of strays. So basically 23 at-large dogs that were turned over to the, to the Humane Society. So that's roughly a cost of about $780 per drop-off. I don't know. To me, that kind of seems on the expensive side. I see that three of those dogs were actually, or I don't know if they're dogs, but pets or animals. Three of those were were picked up by their owners, where the other 20, it seems like they were surrendered somehow. So I don't know what our options are, but it just seems like that's a pretty expensive option. Just looking at the numbers. So I guess my question to staff is, do we have any other options? How do we go about looking at this any further, I guess?
Chief Schroeder, I don't believe there are other options exist for this service to be provided. Is that correct?
The only other option would be the Watertown Humane Society if they were willing to do a contract with us. It's something I could look into. I know from my time working in Watertown, they paid substantially more than $18,000, although they're a larger city. But that's the only other option I know of, and we are required by statute to provide animal control as a city.
And I had some reports about the cost of, for residents to go and pick up their dogs once they're at, once they get turned over to the Humane Society, and my understanding is it's quite expensive. And maybe that's why 20 of these animals were surrendered was because of that cost. And it'd be nice to understand what that cost is a little bit more. Because I like to do the right thing for the animals. I'm kind of a pet lover myself, and just want to make sure that we are offering a humane service here.
I can collect some additional information and report back to the City Council. I don't have that information currently.
So I would move that we table Resolution 23-74 into our next meeting.
Motion to table by Mr. Waters. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Any discussion? I would wonder, I guess a comment or a question I have is, would it be standard to expect some kind of a report or data from our contractor on these services? Because Mr. Waters has done some research to try to gather this information, but it sounds like it's not something that we regularly receive a report on, and I don't know if that's something that could be sought in a contract.
I'll reach out to our contact at the Humane Society and request that they put something together for us.
Any other comments on the motion to table? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on the motion to table Resolution 23-74, which is a proposed contract for 2024 Jefferson County Humane Society?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, so I don't know if that one's time-sensitive, but hopefully we can bring that back at the next, next meeting in November. Okay, on to Agenda Item Letter F, which is Resolution 23-75, Conditional Use Permit. Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 23-75, Conditional Use Permit, declarations and findings, exceedance of maximum heights to allow a six-foot fence in the street yard, 365 Rosewood Avenue, parcel number 24607141841053.
Is there a motion, please?
Okay, I move to approve Resolution 23-75 for 365 Rosewood Avenue for the conditional use permit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Ms. Quinnow. So I see we have Troy Evanson, our zoning administrator, at the podium, so Troy, would you like to introduce us to this proposed permit, please?
Sure. Good evening, Council. I guess long story short, this was, the petitioner had started putting up privacy fence along an existing four-foot picket fence on their property when they moved in. They've got dogs and children. I received a complaint early this spring and reached out to them and said, you know, hey, we got an ordinance here in the city limits that we can't allow privacy fence on the street yard. You can continue the privacy fence in the side and rear yard, basically two side yards for her because they're on a corner. But they questioned, you know, what's the avenue we could do to circumvent this? And it just so happens our ordinance does allow a conditional use to exceed the height of a fence. It doesn't, however, address the opaqueness of a fence, and our ordinance does require a 50% opaque fence in the front and street, front yard and street yard on a corner lot. So I don't know if you guys went through and looked at that, the Plan Commission did recommend approval for the six-foot height, and they did ask for the, they couldn't really modify the opaqueness because the conditional use doesn't allow them to modify the opaqueness. It's basically, we're asking you to agree to a six-foot height maximum, or exceeding the four-foot maximum to a height of six feet. And a couple of the conditions in there were to move it back so that they could plant some plants in the front or some landscaping to screen the six-foot fence, or the six-foot privacy fence, and to, let's see here, it was back six feet, or back three feet, 50% opaque. And then the big one was that they wanted to make it not active or not to be in compliance until June of 2024. And the reason for that was they were hoping to maybe revisit or visit some sort of ordinance change for this fencing ordinance that we have in place right now. There was a little bit of discussion whether or not six-foot privacy fences are uninviting for residential neighborhoods, where other people were kind of saying, hey, it's their property, they have kids, they have dogs, they should be able to protect them. We'd like to let our dogs out and not have to worry about people letting them out. Where I think there were some views of saying, hey, we have an ordinance in place for a reason. It's to have front yards that are, you know, you're able to walk through and kind of see what's going on and see around the neighborhood. So that's kind of where it was left. They did recommend approval, and I think that's kind of what we're looking for today.
I know in their petitioner, they had discussed that there were some other fences that have already been installed similar to this. And I know I did drive around over in the neighborhood, and it looks like there's a few other fences that are especially taller in the backyards, not so much in the front yards, but...
Sure. So the petitioner did reach out to me and had some questions about some existing fences. Again, the six-foot privacy fence is allowed in your side and rear yard, so anything behind the front of the house can be six-foot privacy fence. The couple that were indicated were, our ordinance wasn't implemented until 2014. A couple of those houses have already been, had their fences put up prior to our ordinance. A couple of them, one was in the township, but the one that was really brought to attention because it was issued in 2020 was right down the street on Stonefield. It was a chain link fence that was allowed, same sort of property. It's on a corner lot. It did extend into the street yard. However, it was a chain link fence. It was only five feet tall, so the, you know, the opaqueness obviously was there. And the other kicker was these people had a permit that they applied for, and it was approved by our previous zoning administrator. So I don't know why it was approved. You know, I'd have to dig into that a little bit deeper, but I have the actual copy of the building permit, what they submitted, and the approval with a signature. So they did get an approved permit for that installation, whether it slipped through the cracks or it was something else that they found, that the zoning administrator approved it. I'm not 100% sure. But for the most part, through, you drive through the city, there's not a lot of fences that don't comply with our current ordinance.
Mr. Waters?
So I take it the owner agreed to the three-feet back off and the 50% opaqueness?
Do we have the owner here? If we want to suspend the rules, we can talk with her.
I move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
First formalities.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Field to suspend the rules to allow Ms. Whipper first to talk with the council. All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, that's a five zero. Come on up. Please introduce yourself, and then we'll ask you some questions.
Say, Katie Whipper first, the owner of 365 Rosewood. We did agree to move the fence back. There is already some landscaping on the inside of the fence, so moving the post back to that adequate, I think it's like two or three feet from the property line, would not be an issue. Honestly, our issue is, when we bought the house, it had a four-foot fence, and we were going to keep it as is. But one of the things when we purchased our house is we saw all these six-foot fences in the neighborhood. And for us, we have two Siberian Huskies, so that was like a plus. Because the closer you get to Milwaukee and these other counties, they don't even allow six-foot fences anywhere. So that was a pretty big plus for us moving to Lake Mills, just seeing that you even had them in the city. So we tried to make the four-foot fence work. I work in homeowners claims, so I'm very familiar with the liability side. And, you know, we put up signs to try to protect ourselves because we've had our gates opened and had the dogs go out. They were running up that lovely farm hill over there, by the farms over there. But, you know, even putting the signs up didn't stop people. We still had our dogs let out. We had to make a police report after that, and that's when we decided to change the pickets. So honestly, at the end of the day, this is, we're the homeowners. We take on that liability if someone sticks their hand through our fence. So we're asking for this as a safety concern. You know, if somebody else can come in and put in a conditional use permit, it's a great way for the city to make money, and you still get to say yes or no if it's a safety concern. I think your report said it's not a safety concern, us having that. It's not going to obstruct the view of traffic or, you know, be a safety concern for somebody on their bike on the sidewalk. So I appreciate you guys taking a peek at that, but we would really like to advocate maybe having that as an option for people, not only asking for the height, but asking for the privacy.
And the opaqueness question, 50%?
Yep. As of right now, we agreed to do that, but if this doesn't go through, we would like to appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals to ask for the opaqueness.
Ms. Quinnow?
I'm very familiar with your property because we walk by it. So, and I have encountered your lovely dogs, both by, with my children, as well as, you know, walking with friends and who also have a dog. So, but as it is, I don't see any, and this is true, there's nothing about the way that their fence is that is impeding on viewpoints from any location near the corner. It really, it's no different than a lot of the other, a lot of the other houses in the Brookstone subdivision, especially in the backyard, that we have a lot of folks who have white, six-foot-tall fences. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, we have one two blocks down on the corner. It is white, not picket. It's solid. The gentleman that you were referring to, who had the other fence?
Is that your neighbor?
Is my neighbor. And, but I do know that they, it stops at the back part of their house. It doesn't extend beyond the back part of the house, and if I'm understanding you correctly, you want to bring it a little bit beyond that back part of the house? Which...
No.
No? Okay, I was trying to...
It's a corner lot, so it's considered to have two front yards.
Oh, okay. Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, I see no problem with doing this. I would definitely approve this if I, when given the option.
Any other questions for Mrs. Whipper first? Thank you very much for being here. I have a couple of questions for Troy and probably Attorney Drescher. Just to clarify, the current fence, I think in the material said that it's on the lot line, so they would need to be moving it back anyway, just to comply with the...
Correct. It's noncompliant as it sits right now. You know, she would have, or they would have been able to leave it as is if it was considered existing nonconforming.
Oh, okay.
Because they're modifying it, and because our ordinance, if you guys allow or approve the conditional use, one of the stipulations is to move it back as to adequately allow for maintenance and installing of landscaping to shield that, screen that fence that's going to be approved, or would be approved.
Okay. And then I guess two more questions, and I'm not sure if they would be for you, Troy, or for our attorney, but one is, because this is sort of carved out as an opportunity for people to request a special exception under our ordinance, does that mean that if we would approve this tonight, that it's setting any kind of a precedent? Or would it mean each time somebody would come forward, we would take a look at the facts in that situation?
Yeah, a conditional use permit is not precedential in this circumstance, and you have the ability to review and revoke upon your pleasure. I want to make a similar statement to what I made at the Plan Commission hearing, that under your ordinances, you do have the ability to alter the height, to allow an exceedance of the height by conditional use. You do not have the ability to alter the opaqueness or the location. So this is a good opportunity to bring the fence as an entirety into compliance with the exceedance, if you so choose to allow a conditional use permit for that.
And then that was, I guess that kind of relates to my follow-up question, which is regarding the 50% opaqueness. That's not something that this council can approve.
No, not at this time. I can, there is a special cutout in our ordinance to allow for exceedance of the height requirement by conditional use permit. The same cutout is not allowed for either of those issues, the opaqueness or the location. My contention would be you'd need a variance to vary those conditions under ordinance.
Okay, so I did want to share with the council, and as Troy mentioned, there was some discussion at the Plan Commission, kind of safety and privacy versus the character of the neighborhood and, you know, ability to kind of see through and so forth. And so I'm, and the Plan Commission was interested in talking about this further, and I've been thinking about it as well. And I think corner lots are kind of a special situation where they really don't have a rear yard and two side yards. They, you know, they have sort of two front yards, so to speak. We call them street yards. And so all the people that are able to, who are not on corners, are able to have, you know, fencing in their backyards for dogs, children, you know, for the safety of their family, but when you're on a corner, it doesn't apply the same way. So I'm not sure if that's why this special exception was carved out in the ordinance initially, but I think we're seeing an example where it's not, where it does seem to make sense that it applies.
I believe you're reading it correctly, that the conditional use permit allowing an exceedance in the height is specifically contemplated because of the location on street yard, so as to acknowledge and make someone go through a petition process to establish that this fence, with an exceedance of height up to six feet from four feet in this circumstance, will not interfere with sightlines on roadways, will not interfere with the traffic view and safety issues. So I think that's the right kind of mental logistics to go through in addressing this question. And I think that the ordinance itself was drafted specifically for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff or discussion on this proposed conditional use permit? Okay. If not, then let's proceed with a roll call vote on Resolution 23-75, which is a conditional use permit for the Whipper first at 365 Rosewood Avenue.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye, aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Motion passes three two. Motion passes three-two.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, next agenda item is letter G, which is ordinance twelve fifty-six. This is the third reading of the City of Lake Mills twenty forty comprehensive plan, so Misty, would you read that title for us?
Ordinance twelve fifty-six, An Ordinance to Adopt the City of Lake Mills Comprehensive Plan Twenty Forty, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Is there a motion, please?
A motion to approve ordinance twelve to fifty-six, City of Lake Mills, two thousand twenty-four comprehensive plan.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Qudnow. Uh, Drake, any comments from staff?
Uh, no further comments, just to thank you to the plan commission, the city council, uh, Troy, our zoning administrator, Dustin Wolf and Brian Karanza for their work on this, uh, as well as uh, uh, Attorney Drescher and uh, all other staff that took a part in the, in the review and, and bringing this, this uh, together to uh, perhaps potential adoption tonight.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion on ordinance twelve fifty-six? Mr. Waters?
I'd like to uh, to mirror what uh, what the city manager just said about all the thank yous, and especially to the planning commission. Um, I know that it was many long nights to, to work on this and put this together, and I knew the city council threw it back at him a couple of times to uh, to hopefully improve the, the document. I think it's a better document than, than what we had prior um, fifteen years ago, whenever we went through this the last time. And um, maybe not a perfect document, but uh, but it's a, a much better document than what we've had in the past. So thank you, everybody, for, for your hard work.
Any other comments? I'd like to add my thanks uh, to Mrs. Bishop and the plan commission for all their work on this, um, and also our community. We had a lot of um, citizens coming and attending and filling out a survey and, and giving their input. Uh, people were very engaged and gave really valuable input to um, update this vision for our future. So thanks, my thanks to everyone involved. Okay, if there's no further discussion, uh, let's have a roll call vote on ordinance twelve fifty-six, adoption of the City of Lake Mills twenty forty comprehensive plan.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Qudnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, um, agenda item letter H is ordinance twelve fifty-nine, which is the twenty twenty-four general fund budget. This is our second reading tonight. Misty, would you read that for us, please?
Ordinance twelve fifty-nine, twenty twenty-four general government budget and tax levy ordinance.
Okay. We'll um, move this on to a third reading at our next meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments that they want to bring up before the next meeting?
It has been updated to reflect the revenue from the grant, as well as then the expenditure of those grant funds for the police officer position.
For the, for the cops grant, okay. Great. Oh, okay, I had a comment, it's on the next one, so, okay. So we'll move that on to third reading at our next meeting. Um, agenda item letter I is ordinance twelve sixty, which is our twenty twenty-four capital budget. And this is our second reading for that. Misty, would you read that one for us?
Ordinance twelve sixty, twenty twenty-four capital budget.
Okay, again, that's our second reading on that. Are there any questions or comments before we move that to third reading at our next meeting? Okay. So recommendations for future agendas. Drake, do you have anything?
Um, I have completed um, uh, my first draft of an RFP for architectural services for the uh, Sandy Beach Restaurant. I forwarded that on to the um, uh, restaurateur for their review. Um, so I am hoping that we will um, have that, as well as a clarification of um, what kind of support the uh, uh, restaurateur may, is offering for um, participation in the cost of that uh, design and uh, construction, bidding and construction administration of that. So um, if all goes well, I'm hopeful that will be up here on the agenda um, later in November.
Okay, great, and then I will have the general fund and capital fund, and uh, I imagine we'll have the utility budget as well?
And then we'll also, the public hearing will be that night as well, and then we'll also have some uh, reductions in uh, letters of credits and acceptance of public infrastructure for uh, Summer Ridge Apartments, as well as um, the White Oak on um, South Main Street, on that project, as well as those have been progressing.
Anything from council members? Mr. Waters?
Yeah, um, I'd like to see if staff could make some uh, recommendations back to council on the consulting services of our planner and our engineers. Uh, engineering service, specifically the current planner is Meaden Hunt, and our consulting engineer is Strand Associates. I think it's been about fifteen years since we've actually um, had a review of that. And um, at that time, we went through an RFP process and reviewed different firms, and these were the two firms that we came up with at that time. So does that make sense to, to have the staff make a recommendation back to us on the best way to maybe approach reviewing those two consultants?
Sure.
Okay, we will prepare for that.
Okay. And then also?
Yes?
Also, um, I think we were looking at, oh, I'm gonna miss the acronym, but the, the government funds during the COVID period.
So I have asked, um, I've asked all staff to put together um, potential projects that could be used for that. So they're completing memos to myself, uh, that I'll go through and then um, present something to the city council as well. So um, I don't know if it'll be um, for um, next meeting, it might, it may be, but prior to the end of the year, we'll be having that discussion.
Fantastic, thank you. All I have.
Thank you, I'm just a follow-up question on that. So that would, would that require budget amendments if we approve some um, expenditure of those funds? So it's not in our twenty twenty-four proposed budget now to expend any of those funds?
Um, you likely could authorize them through resolution, and then we usually do uh, if necessary, a true, a true-up uh, budget amendment at the end of the year to um, accurately reflect. Okay. ARPA, Sam, Director Bell just clarified for me that the ARPA funds are held in a separate fund, so it does not require an amendment of the budget that's being approved um, uh, later, later this month.
Okay, so there's no, no time sensitivity necessarily, other than the deadline for spending the funds, yeah?
So I believe the, the funds have to be encumbered by the end of twenty twenty-four. So it's possible that you could expend them still in later years, but they have to be spoken for uh, and specifically assigned. But um, we would look to avoid any confusion and likely spend them by, prior to the end of twenty twenty-four.
I think some, some discussion by the end of the year on ideas at least, and, you know, give us some things to think about. It seems like a good, a good timeline. Any other proposals from council members?
Uh, on ARPA, there were, in, in the work session, it came up. The expenditure that I couldn't recall at the time that we used ARPA funds for was the one-time expenses for the Ryan Brothers contract, that thirty thousand. So we're around two hundred and sixty thousand dollars remaining in ARPA funds.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um, so we'll move on to agenda item number ten, which is to convene into closed session to discuss legal claims pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight-five-one-G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved, and to discuss city manager review pursuant to Section nineteen point eight-five-one-C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. So can I get a motion to convene into closed session?
Motion to move into closed session?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields. All in favor, please raise your hands. Mr. Fields? Okay, that's a five oh, uh, so we'll be convening in a closed session. Uh, when we reconvene, we'll be, we will not be televised, so this will be the end of our televised meeting. Thank you.